I'm the Park City Council's order. Will Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Grimes, councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Okay. Councilmember Grimes should be joining us any minute. Councilmember Mail is calling in and participating remotely. And councilmember Schultz will not be here. And we can only accommodate one remote attendee per meeting, so there's no way we could accommodate councilmember Schultz. And that gets to the first thing that I wanted to note, which is that anybody who's surprised to see that the agenda item on license plate readers is again off the agenda, this time just like last time, it's because not all councilmembers will be here and able to participate. And I wanted to make sure that everybody can be here for the meeting and vote on this item. So I learned late Friday afternoon that two councilmembers would not be able to be here, so I pulled it from the agenda. We'll put it back on the agenda ASAP. And any couple items on upcoming agendas, I'll just point out that next week, Monday, July 21st, we have two work session items on, first, a discussion of vacant and blighted properties tax rate, and second, a discussion of options for opt-in, opt-out of the Montgomery County Code. And then a reminder that we have a meeting on Monday, July 28th, and then we take our summer break, and we're off for the month of August, and we will be back after Labor Day. And one of the things that we're in the process of trying to schedule is a Tuesday meeting. In addition to the council Monday night meetings, we want to put together a special Tuesday meeting where there's a presentation for the council and the public on the results of the requests for proposals for the Tacoma Junction city lot. So that, I'm anticipating that it may be September 9th, but that's not finalized yet. And that takes care of the agenda scheduling update. We'll now go to public comments on the voting items. In addition to the consent agenda, we only have one voting item this evening, and that's Agenda Item 1, which is a first reading ordinance amending the code to add environmentally preferable purchasing. Does anybody wish to comment on that voting item for this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to public comments on non-voting items or other matters that are on the agenda this evening, which would include the work session. Anybody want to make any public comments on those? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Thea Scorato, and I'm on Orchard Avenue, our business. My hope is that our family can come to the rec center and see a music performance, or take a class and go to the library and not also be exposed to microwave radiation. Dr. Martha Herbert is a Harvard doctor, an autism neurodevelopmental disorder researcher who did a review of the research on neurological impacts from radio frequency and said the following: There are thousands of papers that have accumulated that document adverse health and neurological effects of RF. RF from Wi-Fi and cell towers can exert a disorganizing effect on the ability to learn and remember, and can also be destabilizing to immune and metabolic function. This will make it harder for some children to learn, particularly those having problems in the first place. The FCC is currently reviewing our outdated 18-year-old safety standards. There are about 1,000, almost 1,000 submissions from scientists and citizens, and the key details for you to understand are that children were not a part of the standards when they set them. They use a 220-pound male model, as usual. They're based on thermal effects only, so they're only looking at if your body is heated. Low levels does not mean low effects. And please note, it's the erratic nature of the signal, not the average power over time. Everyone says this radiation is so low, don't worry about it, it doesn't, you know, change the atom. Anyway, I won't go into that. I'd like to read a letter from the EPA which states, "The FCC's current exposure guidelines are thermally based and do not apply to chronic non-thermal exposure situations." And I have that letter for you as well. And Wi-Fi and cell phones constitute chronic non-thermal exposures. I'm going to quote Dr. Blank from Columbia University from his letter on Wi-Fi. "Scientific data on the biological effects of RF indicate the need to pursue a precautionary approach to protect the exposed population. It is clear that RF radiation can cause single and double-strand breaks at exposure levels that are considered safe by FCC guidelines. This calls for a need to limit exposure, especially for children who are growing rapidly and undergoing rapid cell division with greater probability of cell damage." I can't come to every council meeting, and I actually have to leave after this, but I'm glad to put together a presentation. It took me a long time to understand this, and when I first heard it, I thought, this is crazy. And I thought, this just can't be. I just got a headset, decided not to worry about it, and I just want to say that having learned what I know, I also have a meter, so you could see what things expose you to what, and you'll suddenly understand a lot more about this issue. So, thank you. Just let me know. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Anybody else wish to comment, public comment on non-voting items?
Good evening, council. Ian Barclay, Cedar Avenue. And I'm here to decry the newsletter article about the metro site. Specifically, I remind the council that I believe it was 90, maybe Brian can correct me here, 92, 96 percent, something like that, in the survey that was reported last week was the primary source of information for the public of cities' goings-on. And I realize that, of course, this metro is technically in the District of Columbia, but as we all have observed, and the mayor testified so, and Seth, both at the Womata compact, it affects Tacoma Park a great deal. And there are mentions twice in that article that that commuter parking, which we all know, if you know your stuff, that that parking was specifically designed to discourage commuters because the maximum amount of time you can park there is seven hours. Well, most people don't have a seven-hour day, including going downtown and back. Number two, it does not mention the bike share, which I know that the city is way behind and a big supporter of. And there's bike share, there's the bike stores, lockers that are due to be increased, I believe. Neither one of those things was mentioned. Way deep in the article, it's mentioned that there's a buffer that's going to be consumed in that development as it is turned. And that buffer was voted by the DC City Council. And I remind people that, you know, the idea that, oh, well, if we can do away with that, that's going to kind of get the council in a snit. And just generally, the way that article was produced, I really must ask that the council instruct the newsletter publishers to retract or amend that article because it's just a glaring error. And as I suggest, there's a number of new people in the community. They're going to use the newsletter, as we know from our survey, as their primary source of information. And when the city sets out to inform the public, it should be done on a very, very high standard of factuality. And I thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. And just a reminder that the council doesn't get to instruct the city newsletter to do anything. If direction was going to come, it would come from staff. We would direct staff to do something, and staff would implement that. Any other public comments? Okay, we will move to council comments, and I'll just start with a note that councilmember Siemens asked me to remove Consent Agenda Number F, Number 2F, from the consent agenda, so we'll take that up separately. That's the police cars. So we will take that up after the consent agenda. Any councilmembers have any comments? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind the public that there will be a Flower Avenue-Green Street project public meeting on Wednesday, July 16th. Meeting starts at 7:00 PM. It will be held at Wilkinson Hall, that's on Washington Ventus University's campus, and the address is 7600 Flower Avenue. This is a great chance for residents to come and see what's going on with the Flower Avenue project. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. I'll take the opportunity to address some of the points that Mr. Barclay raised regarding the metro site. You didn't pose them as questions, but still I can fill you in and anyone else on certain points. In particular, I've had an exchange with Stan Wall, the Womata Vice President for Real Estate, in the last few days. And it was an omission that they did not show, that is, Womata and the developer UIA did not show bicycle circulation in the exhibits for the compact hearing that was on June 18th. They are revising that diagram. The bike share station is in place and will remain in place, and Womata had intended to create a new bicycle parking structure that is similar to the one but less ornate, similar to the one at Union Station. That had been planned for this year and is now planned for next calendar year. And the buffer, I can't address, and the mayor already said something about the newsletter. And I will add one thing, though, which is, as many people are aware, there are a group of neighborhood activists who are working on this topic. I am working with them. And they are working with Historic Tacoma, which has incurred certain legal costs, and they are, Historic Tacoma, that is, is raising money from the public. Anyone who wishes to contribute can go to historic Tacoma dot O R G, and you'll hit a donation button there, and you can donate to cover some of the legal costs that are being incurred regarding this project. Thanks.
Any other council comments? Seeing none, we'll move to city manager's comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide the council just a very small update. Last week, there was a few residents from the Pinecrest community in particular that had noted some issues in terms of code enforcement for some houses that were located, I think, along West Moreland and Allegheny Avenue in particular. I spoke to our code enforcement folks, both during the meeting and then after the meeting, just to get a better sense. And I think that the word that I hear from our code enforcement folks is that many of the properties that were mentioned during the resident comment section have been known to the code enforcement staff. We continue to monitor them, and we will continue to follow up on some of the issues that were noted by the community, so just wanted to make the council aware of that.
And are some of those properties potentially in court? Because I know that can take time.
I think that there is, for some, there is some extenuating external circumstances that are outside of direct code enforcement-related issues that we continue to work with the county and other folks to try to address.
That sounds like a yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We don't have any minutes to adopt this evening, so we will move to our regular meeting agenda. And the first item is a first reading ordinance amending code to add the environmental, environmentally preferable purchasing sections. Do we have whoever is going to present that here?
Might be me tonight, I think. I think we're a little ahead of schedule, which is unusual for us. So this-
We can-
No.
We can jump to the consent agenda and the following and come back?
No, let me try. So this has been-
Oh, before you go, I want to double-check. Councilmember Mail, did you have any, anything you wanted to say?
No, Mayor Williams, I'm happy to wait until the comment on the next agenda items.
I was trying to bail out the city manager.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't help it.
Okay.
This issue, I think, has been discussed previously, specifically at a work session on June 2nd. It is around adding some additional language to the city's code around environmentally preferable purchasing. Many of these recommendations were done by the Committee on the Environment. Specifically, they seek to expand the range of, to a broader range of items and services, some of the environmentally preferable purchasing options that the city would have available. The Committee on the Environment, in order to develop this language, has evaluated other model language from the University of Maryland, as well as the city of Hyattsville in crafting the recommended language that is in front of you now. City staff has worked closely with the Committee on the Environment, as well as with the city attorney's office, to review this ordinance and this language. And this is something that I think that we feel will be favorable towards the city and allow us to continue doing many of the environmentally sustainable efforts that we're already pushing forward on. So I am free to answer any questions that I'm able to answer on it.
Are there council questions or comments? Councilmember Grimes?
I'll simply thank in particular naming Cindy Dabala, the co-chair of the Committee on the Environment, for her work on this and for accommodating changes that were suggested by the council, including myself and councilmember Mail.
Other council comments? I'll just reiterate one that I think I brought up when we were in work session, just looking at the, at the page, top of Page 3, Item 4, which is about purchase of certain products and services, the provisions on remanufactured products. And I'll just say that when I looked at that list of items, the ones that jumped out at me were laser toner cartridges and tires, I thought, if I were, if I were the person purchasing these items, I would kind of look askance at the possibility of purchasing some of those remanufactured products. I know that in thinking about laser toner cartridges, I always have the sense that as soon as you use a remanufactured laser toner cartridge, you void the warranty on the printer. And on tires, I would never put a remanufactured tire on a vehicle, so I'm not quite sure why that's in there, but I'll trust that there's enough flexibility in this ordinance, since it talks about using them wherever practicable, but without reducing safety, quality, or effectiveness, I'll assume that that covers that and makes it so that reasonable accommodation can be made. Other comments?
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I want to repeat, councilmember Grimes is, thanks to the Public Works Committee and Cindy in particular. I'm very supportive of us moving forward with this document. The one area where I would potentially suggest amendment, and let me ask the city manager a question, or city staff a question before I do so, it's on Page 3 as well, and it concerns under Item E, Number 5. And so first, it lays out three federal standards, federal government standards. It has the standards that cover one, six, seven different types of products. And then it goes on to list corporate, corporate standards, non-governmental standards. And I guess my concern is just that if we put the standards, especially industry standards and their names change fairly frequently, at least in my experience with sustainable purchasing standards, sustainable food standards. And so I just wonder if we couldn't achieve the same purpose by essentially saying, under 5, wherever practicable products and materials should use and meet the following federal standards where applicable, and industry standards, you know, at the discretion of or at the direction of the city manager, or something like that. And then, you know, leave it, leave out the U.S. Green Building Council lead standards and the following bullets, but put those in the cover of the, of the whereas clauses that precede the ordinance. In other words, list them and say, you know, whereas the U.S. Green Building Council, Responsible Purchasing Network, dot, 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 those standards exist and should be followed by the city, and then move on to the next whereas clause. I'm just, just trying to create, to eliminate what could be a headache two or four, six years from now, where an ordinance refers to something that doesn't exist anymore. So it's a fairly minor technical issue, but I'm curious if the city manager has any thoughts on that, or anyone else.
I think that would be fine.
Yeah, and if I can suggest maybe the way to do it is to just, where those particular standards are listed, say, for example, current ones are these standards in that way. It's, it's got the language you used, but you don't have to go back to the whereas to find the examples. We keep them in the, in the resolve part, just as examples.
And I support that as amended. So, thank you. That's it for my comments.
Okay. So if you want to offer that as an amendment, and does the clerk have the language that we would need for the amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to double-check and make sure everybody's fine with that amendment. Okay? So we are looking for additional comments on the resolution as amended. Councilmember Grimes?
I hope no one, this is not a substance question. I hope no one finds this too weird. The drafting of the ordinance is irregular in its use of serial commas, that is, X, Y, and Z, or X, Y, or Z. For the second reading, I'd suggest that the clerk go through the amendment and make it consistent with the rest of city code. I think this is one of these Too Many Cooks types of things.
Noted. Anything else? Okay, this is a first reading. All those in favor, please say, well, let's see. We got councilmember Mail remotely, why don't we just do vocal?
Councilmember Schultz, councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Mail.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. So that passes unanimously among the six of us voting. Thank you all, and thank you, city manager, for stepping in and handling that intro on that one. So if the Public Works Director shows up, we can tell her she can go home.
She'll come back next week.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Well, actually, yeah, she's going to be here for the work session. We have the consent agenda minus Item F. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Smith, second by councilmember Grimes. All of us in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. We will now go to the consent, Item F, which is going to be considered separately. This is a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of replacement police vehicles. Councilmember Siemens?
Yes, I was just interested in hearing from Chief Recuci.
You're going to have to wait a while for that one. We're going to have to wait for what's going to be called in.
I apologize. He was on my mind tonight. Like to hear the, specifically about the type of vehicle that you're proposing, are Ford interceptor utility vehicles?
That's correct. These are patrol vehicles. As you know, the Crown Vic is no longer made. It was discontinued two years ago. We have tried a number of different cars. We have Chargers in the fleet, police package Chargers. We have several of the Ford interceptor sedans, and then we have the Ford interceptor utilities. What we've determined is that the only two vehicles that really are appropriate for patrol use right now for the vast majority of officers are the Charger and Utility. The sedan just doesn't have the room in it. What we found is the Ford interceptor utility is an all-wheel-drive crossover. It gets better gas mileage than the Crown Vics did, and it has a lot more room in it for the officers. The sedans do not have enough legroom for anybody who's really taller than me. I like the car, but most of the other people don't. And what we found in the surrounding jurisdictions as well, DC, Montgomery County, is they're having the same exact issues. That's why Montgomery County is buying just the utilities and/or Chargers. The gas mileage on these are equivalent to the sedan. They're the same chassis, it's just a different body and a different interior.
The reason that Chief Recuci was on my mind tonight is when he was here, he was, he had for his own vehicle a hybrid, and he was talking about his, he was impressed with the performance and handling and interior space in that vehicle, and was considering using that for some of the vehicles in the department. And the utility vehicle seems to be a large step in another direction.
No, it's a replacement of the Crown Vic, and the, there, everything from a liability issue to a performance issue. The, in patrol, the hybrids have no business being in patrol. These are patrol replacement vehicles, not detectives, not administrative staff, and not mine. I'm driving the hybrid as well. The patrol vehicles are certified for pursuit-rated vehicles, including the utility. The hybrids are not even certified as special service vehicles for police to begin with, but the, but for patrol, it's an absolute necessity to have a certified pursuit-rated vehicle. Brakes, transmission, the suspension, crash tests, everything goes into that certification.
One of my concerns with the utility vehicle is just the impression it gives the community. It's more of a militaristic appearing vehicle, it's-
It's a Ford Explorer. I mean, that's basically what it is. And what, one of the studies that, that was done by NIJ and by another police department, majored police department, was also the effects of having a slightly larger vehicle in the mirror when you're, when you're stopping vehicles. It actually reduced the number of pursuits, people pulled over faster. I don't consider the difference between the front end of a Ford interceptor utility and a Ford interceptor sedan that much different. You know, I do understand, you know, the perception, but the reality is, it's the same drivetrain, the same transmission, the same everything, except there's more room in the vehicle for the officer. The hybrids do not have the room for all the patrol equipment. They cannot handle the electronics. That is, they just don't. I jumpstart my car two or three times a week if I forget to take, unplug my computer, which it actually shuts off after an hour anyway. But it's, they are problematic for the electrical systems. We run a lot of equipment in those things, and it's not going to get any better in the near future.
Well, you haven't raised my enthusiasm, but I will defer to your judgment.
Yeah, I wouldn't, you know, I like my, I'll be honest with you, I love my hybrid as a commuter vehicle, great gas mileage. I only have to worry about filling it up maybe once a week, once, maybe twice, depending on what I'm doing. But again, the hybrid vehicles only have like a 380-amp battery. You can't buy any other battery except the one that Ford makes because it's the only one that fits in it. And it's not enough to run the equipment. And, you know, the Chargers, the Chevy, which is not really a viable option for us, but the Dodge Charger and the Ford interceptor utilities have the electrical system and the high-capacity batteries, the charging systems as well to run what we're putting more and more accessories in the vehicle. Just to give you a rundown real quick, we have a mobile computer, we have in-car video, we have the lights, we have the radio, sometimes two radios. And then on top of that, you know, we have a lot of times where we're sitting on the side of the road with the engine off with the lights going, and it just draws that down. We even have ETICs, the ticketing system. Everything's electronic in that car, and you have to have a system that's capable of charging the battery.
Right. I'm familiar with the trouble we've had in the past with the electronics.
I carry a jumpstarter in my car, so.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry if you said this, I'm making you repeat something, but why the Ford interceptor utility versus the Charger? I'm just looking at it. Councilmember Siemens makes a good point about what it looks like.
Well, one, the Charger, again, has some trunk space issues. They didn't come out with the all-wheel-drive version of the Charger until this year. One of the things that's really nice about the utility is that it's all-wheel-drive, so we don't have to, it's not, it's not one of those cars that we have to worry about in the wintertime. We always have it available in bad weather, ice, snow, whatever. The utility also gives us the option of putting more equipment in the back. The Chargers are performance cars, they're really great police cars. I've had a take-home Charger in my past life, as well as a full-size SUV, which, you know, was a Tahoe. I will tell you that the best balance between them is the utility interceptor. It's cheaper. It gets about the same gas mileage as the Charger. The Charger, depending on what kind of area you're driving through, might get a little bit better on the highway, but the interceptor probably gets a little bit better in the city. And frankly, nationwide, that's, that is the new Crown Vic. I mean, the Utility. The departments are going away from the sedans. I believe it was California Highway Patrol, and even California Highway Patrol, you'd think they would be getting some, the Chargers and things like that, that, you know, do 150 miles an hour. The Ford Interceptor Utility is becoming the standard. It is the new Crown Vic.
Any other questions for the Chief? Okay, thanks. I'm trying to remember, we introduced this? It's been moved?
I didn't note it.
Okay, so would somebody like to move this? Single reading ordinance.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by councilmember Grimes, second by councilmember Smith. Any additional discussion? Since the single reading ordinance, we'll, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mail?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
I think no.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz? Mayor Williams?
Aye. The ordinance passes four to two. And it's now eight oh one, and we're not that early for the update on Flower Avenue, Green Street project. But I, you want to do a little song and dance to start this one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you can, you can sing an intro and she'll wall sit.
That's exactly what I'll do. So, this is to provide a little bit of an update. I actually don't remember the last time the council has heard an update on the Flower Avenue, Green Street project. But just to remind people a little bit, just, and we provided some information in the packet that's attached here. Sort of the purpose again for doing a lot of this work along Flower Avenue. Again, this is a highly-traveled thoroughfare. It is serviced by a number of pedestrians, including schoolchildren. In particular, the ride-on operates three routes, and there are 16 bus stops on the corridor, each, eight in each direction. Along many parts of the stretch of Flower Avenue, there are no sidewalks. So pedestrians obviously face difficulties crossing the street, waiting for bus lines, as well as dealing with oncoming vehicular traffic, as well as sightline issues. A study was done by S H A that shows that 85% of the vehicles on Flower Avenue are traveling 10 miles over the posted speed limit. And so, we in the city obviously have seen an opportunity to try to address some of the pedestrian issues. In addition, along Flower Avenue, it has minimal stormwater infrastructure. Most of the time, the streets generally have catch basins or other inlets into which rainwater flows and is transported to pipes to local streams. Particularly in this part of Flower Avenue, there are just two inlets opposite each other. There are no other inlets for the full length of Flower Avenue. So, most of the stormwater is running off essentially into our creeks. And so, another purpose for trying to address some challenges along this stretch are also to deal with some of the stormwater management-related issues. With that as sort of a background as to why we have decided, again, to start to work on this stretch of Flower Avenue, I will turn it over to our public works director to give us a little bit more detail on where we are right now with the project.
Well, I was included in your packet, and I was a little shocked to see the date. We actually started working on this in July 2012. So, you know, time flies when you're having fun. So, we are in the process of developing the plan for Flower Avenue, Green Street. It's one that's evolved with a variety of different emphasises. Initially motivated by State Highway and the city's shared interest in trying to resolve some longstanding issues about maintenance on Flower Avenue, control of Flower Avenue, as well as some of the 410 corridors. So, in conversations with the state, it became apparent that they were interested in no longer owning and managing that section of Flower Avenue, because it was a separate, isolated, one-mile stretch that no longer connected to them to other state routes. So, the city took advantage of that opportunity. State Highway also, through a memorandum, provided funding, almost $700,000 of funding, to help the city establish what it wanted to do on Flower Avenue. So, from that starting point, we put out an RFP, hired a Rommel Klepper &amp; Call and design engineering firm that we've worked with on other streetscape issues. And we've been meeting with the community. We're about to have our third formal community meeting with the residents along Flower Avenue to talk about what the issues are, what the opportunities are, and help to design what that street will evolve and look like. I think first and foremost that came up in the community process was an interest in traffic calming and in safe pedestrian access. So, those are primary movers of the layout and the design. The city's strong interest was in managing stormwater in environmentally beneficial ways. So, that was our piece that we were really interested in moving forward as we went ahead. So, those components are included in the program. We've had several reiterations of the design. Though, you know, we are talking about a one-mile stretch with existing housing and an existing road. So, it's not going to look, you know, not going to change the total direction of the road or anything else. So, we're working within a very defined footprint. And that primarily has worked well, though there has been some challenges. A major issue along that road was the lack of safe sidewalk on the east or north side of the street. And so, in the process of trying to design that, there's a very changeable right-of-way boundary up along that section of Flower Avenue. So, we had to negotiate and work with property owners, some of whom had property that the sidewalk would cross. And as is true in any case with sidewalks, if the city isn't placing the sidewalk in the right-of-way, then we need an easement agreement with the property owner in order to place that sidewalk there. So, we started with 17 properties and are now down to six. So, we had to redesign and work around people's own comfort levels with the idea of the sidewalk location as was originally designed. So, we're moving forward in that regard. We think we'll be able to accomplish all the easements that we need in the final design. We've worked numerous times with the utility companies as we're developing the plan. Obviously, the work that we do always has an impact on the utilities underneath, and they have authority to limit, as well as restrict, some of what we do over their lines, gas lines, electric lines, water and sewer. In working with W S S C, it became apparent about a year or so ago that they were interested in doing a full water main replacement project on that section of Flower Avenue. So, as a result of that, they had a timeframe that was much slower than what we were currently moving forward with in our planning process. So, we were able to really reach an agreement where our design team is developing the water main replacement project. W S S C will be paying for that design work. They'll also be paying for the construction portion of that work. And we'll be partnering those two programs, so that when the construction takes place, it'll be combined. And the contractor will be doing both the water main work, as well as the street work and the sidewalk work and the stormwater work. What that means is that instead of having multiple construction projects several years apart, it'll be mayhem for one controlled amount of time versus multiple impacts. And then the end result, of course, is we know we have a new water main and whatever sewer repairs are needed. And when the roads resurface, hopefully it will remain uncut for a while. After numerous conversations with Washington Gas, they initially indicated several times they weren't interested or had no plans for replacing the gas lines. We just learned last week they've changed their mind. So, we don't really know the full impacts of that. Washington Gas, because of the issues with the gas lines, they have one assigned contractor that they work with to do all their gas main repairs. So, it's not a situation where we're going to be able to partner with and do a joint design and have our contractor do the gas main work. So, we'll be meeting with them and may call upon you all to help us get clearer responses and move the gas project up the priority list for Washington Gas. A lot of our previous contacts with Washington Gas are no longer with the organization. So, we're sort of starting with some new counterparts. So, that will be a major issue that will, you know, kind of a new fly in the ointment that we'll have to work around and develop. But other than that, the planning is coming together well. Like I mentioned, we had the State Highway money as a first source. We also were successful in getting over $1 million in a transportation alternatives grant that the city applied for. We also were successful in getting almost $170,000 in a National Fish and Wildlife Federation grant that will be focused on the stormwater aspects of that. Councilman Smith was able to get the Montgomery County Council, who'd been on record as providing funding, to agree to put it all in one year. $200,000 towards the sidewalk construction. So, the various pieces of the cost are coming together. We're not 100% covered. We still have a slight amount in the $30,000 range. And again, I can't stress enough that we're talking about cost estimates here. We haven't gone out to bid. We don't have final design. As things have recently happened with Washington Gas, we may have, you know, other issues that come up. But currently, the project is well on its way towards significant outside funding and is moving through the process. The timeline has had to been adjusted as a result of, you know, trying to work around some of the community issues, as well as the funding issues and the utility issues. Now appears as if we'll be through design in the early parts of next year. Because of the transportation alternatives grant, they have a very long process for reviewing our documents and providing approval. We have to have all our permits in place before we go out to bid. Typically, we tend to get permits after we've awarded bids. So, that's a kind of a, you know, reverse way from what we're used to working on. So, it'll add some time. So, we're hoping that by the end of next year, we're looking at starting construction 2015, 2016. So, again, we can estimate at this point what we think timeframe-wise for the construction. But until we really get final designs and are able to go out to bid and select a vendor, it's all just kind of best guess, conjecture and estimate right now. So, Wednesday night's meeting with the neighborhood will be at the Washington Venice University Wilkinson Hall at 7:00 P.M. There'll be a presentation by our design team. And then also, W S S C will be there to talk about the water main aspects of the project. The city's website has been updated, so the latest design documents are available on the website that show the full layout of that one-mile section of Flower Avenue and various color-coded components to show where the stormwater features are, where the sidewalk is, where the curb adjustments are. The project includes a lot of intersection features, narrowing intersections to create bumpouts for bus stops, as well as traffic calming. At the neighborhood's request, we've added a number of stop signs at some of the intersections to try to control particularly access for people who are coming from the cross streets onto Flower Avenue. We've created a bit more visual clearance by bumping out the intersection. So, as you're approaching the street, you'll be further out and able to see. So, there's a variety of different traffic calming and pedestrian safety features that are included. Lastly, we've been looking at street lighting. We did apply for a grant for some street lighting funding, and unfortunately, we're not successful. But we have been talking to Pepco about upgrading the existing lighting that's on the street on the wooden utility poles, so the 20-foot-high utility poles. Pepco does offer an LED light fixture, and we're working with them. They have a program that potentially we can partner with them on and have a reduced funding and some cost share. So, we're developing that program. I think it's about a total of 30 lights. That would be existing lights would be converted to LED. There's also a plan to add more pedestrian-scale lighting on the other side of the street. And by that, I mean the 12 to 15-foot fixtures that are more decorative, also in an LED lighting-style type. And so, we're looking at both lighting improvements. When our design folks went out and did the lighting analysis along the street, they did find it to be underlit, both for traffic standards, as well as for pedestrian safety standards. So, that became a more enhanced part of the project than when we initially started. There's also, lastly, the issue of furniture, furniture art, bus shelters. At this point, there isn't anything hard and fast in the design. The C D B G funding will be used towards some of the streetlight work, and that will be in this fiscal year, providing everything continues to move along. We're discussing how best to address the bus shelter issue. We do have an existing arrangement with a bus shelter company, whether or not the city wants to continue that or move into something else. One of the challenges is there. We have very limited right-of-way, very limited space. So, we may not be able to provide everything we'd like to in the bus shelters, but we are providing much more space for the bus access, both front door and back door access, as well as room for the bus to be adjacent to the curb. So, some of those other amenities will be developed as we identify funding sources and, you know, just continue to move the project through to final design. So, the idea this evening was just to kind of give you an update. I know several councilmembers had asked for updates. So, we wanted to provide you information with sort of where we are with the costs, where we are with the funding, and where we are with the design. So, that's the hope. You got like a picture of that this evening.
Yeah, that's very helpful. If you can just clarify one or two things in talking about going from 17 properties to six on the sidewalk easements, can you just say a little bit more about the cause of the change? And what I'm thinking is, was it kind of moving around pockets of resistance? Or was it change in the specs or a combination?
It was largely moving around pockets of resistance. We started out, you know, you start out with your most ideal plan, which the ideal plan was a five-foot-wide green strip and, I mean, an eight-foot-wide green strip and a five-foot-wide sidewalk. And in most, many cases, we had that amount of right-of-way plus in order to work in. With some of the properties, their right-of-way extended all the way to the curb. So, they had to give us permission for that eight-foot green strip and five-foot sidewalk. So, in some cases, we weren't able to get on the same page with them about that. In cases where we had a little amount of space, we moved the sidewalk to the curb rather than had the setback for the green strip. In areas where we had planned some stormwater features, if we didn't have the property and couldn't get the agreement, we eliminated those and moved the sidewalk out to the curb. In one section, we had a group of five houses that we needed to have agreement with, and they were unified in their opposition to that. So, we actually developed the design to move the curb and slightly adjust the street configuration. And the center line of the street moves a foot and a half to the west, so we can avoid the property boundaries. So, some of it required a little more creativity than others.
And are those properties split along both sides?
No, all on the eastern side.
All on the Montgomery County side?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, on the city's western side, we have very limited right-of-way there, too. Much more limited than we have on the other side. But the sidewalks aren't in place. It exists and is there and pretty much follows the right-of-way boundary. So, we didn't have the same kind of issues to address there.
And on the funding with the changes in timing with now with Washington Gas kind of pushing the schedule back, is that going to cause any problem with any funding sources where we get tight on the timing in terms of using them? You know, are we going to have a problem with something in danger of lapsing because we haven't?
Well, we're starting to get close to that. We're not in danger of that right now. But we have alerted, I think, the National Fish and Wildlife Federation funding is the one that's most sensitive at this point. They were okay with the 2015, 2016 finish. But if we start getting much later into the year in 2016, that might create some problems. There is the avenue to ask for an extension and negotiate that ahead of time. So, we don't feel like we'll be, you know, we'll be stuck with that. We think we'll be able to work around that. There's also with some of that, the ability to, we could potentially put the stormwater features in first and then go back and do the rest of the project.
But it sounds like we're letting the funders know
Oh, yeah.
the schedule is pushing back and why. And so, it's not going to be a surprise if we come up needing a little bit of extra time or have to do something to accommodate.
Yeah, and given that we still have so much lead time, we've got a lot of time. All the funders also need to see the design plans and approve them. So, you know, we'll be in communication with them several more times, particularly State Highway in a very formal way before we move forward.
And are there any other utilities that are going to pop up to?
I hope not. We haven't heard from R C N Comcast or Verizon, but they're all overhead, so.
And there's no reason to think that there's any money in order to be able to underground any of this?
No, no, that hasn't been, that hasn't been a topic of conversation from the utility point of view. Pepco, of course, is not interested in, they haven't indicated any interest in doing anything different out there than they've done before.
They just invested in replacing a lot of the above ground along Flower Avenue.
Yeah, they've done their reliability project, extended the poles and relined Flower Avenue, I think, two or plus years ago, so.
Yeah, they were still finishing some of it up even within the last year. Yeah, they were still finishing some of it up even within the last year.
Well, I think we have a pole or two that's still awaiting to be removed.
All right. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Ms. Berthwaite, thank you very much for the presentation. This is by far the biggest issue for residents of Ward Five. They always ask me about it. We're going to have the bike station on Flower Avenue. I know it's too narrow to actually have a bike, specific lane. Is there any way we can get some type of signage that, you know, alerts vehicle traffic that bikes are going to be used in the road? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, well, we do have, in the planning office, they have established a sign that's used and approved for bike-share-the-road that State Highway approves. It's in the standard language for signs, so I'm sure we could add that as a feature in signage to the road. I'll talk with Erkan Osberg, the city planner, to find out what they have in mind in terms of any other directional signs or wayfinding signs related to Flower Avenue.
Okay, great. Is there going to be a sidewalk placed in front of the athletic field?
Yes.
There will be, okay.
Yeah, basically, the sidewalk will extend from Carroll Avenue to Piney Branch Road the entire way on the eastern side.
Okay. And can you tell us a little about the materials used? Will there be any recyclable, anything?
For the sidewalk, we're looking at fairly standard sidewalk installation. There are a few tree impacts where we're narrowing the sidewalk to three feet, which is the minimum for ADA, but in most cases, those are going to be in the existing roadway path or near to where they are now. We haven't looked at alternative materials for the sidewalk for a number of reasons. We've got quite a bit of it. It's a fairly long stretch at a mile long and five feet wide. The alternative materials, so far, we've tended to use related to tree protection, related to permeability for tree roots. We don't have those kind of impacts in a major way. We're also developing the stormwater features adjacent to the roadway, so we're creating bioretention facilities to treat not only the runoff from the new impervious area of the sidewalk, but also from the street and the houses themselves. So we're creating the project to be able to manage and treat any of the additional runoff. The other issue you run into with permeability in sidewalks, which is always going to be a challenge for our area, is that in order to have a permeable sidewalk, you have to create the permeable area below the sidewalk. So it turns your excavation from eight inches into 24 or even more. So it adds significantly to the cost and can also create an issue with utilities. One of the things that we've been doing in this project, and I think it'll serve well the rest of the state, is we've gotten an agreement with WSSC relative to bioretention facilities and water lines. You know, first, when we started out, they were like, you cannot have a bioretention facility anywhere near a water and sewer line, which makes it impossible in our type of city where you've got 50-foot frontages. Everybody's got a water and sewer line to their house. You eliminate any possibility for having bioretention features along the right-of-way. So we worked with them, and our design team was instrumental in this, about using native soils, about using PV sleeves over the lines, you know, within those facilities, and creating a way that increased their comfort level with us being able to build these adjacent or near their house lines. So that's the other issue you get to with permeable, you know, areas beneath sidewalks. You then have the issue of potentially impacting water or sewer lines and needing to work with the utilities to address that. So it's primarily a cost function, as well as a design and installation, creating a lot of additional challenges with that, plus the fact that we feel like we're going to treat the stormwater with our facilities, so there isn't a need to provide it underneath the sidewalks.
Is it possible that we could look at just, not the entire sidewalk, but pieces of it? Where we might be able to do some?
Yeah, we can take a look, particularly in those areas where we do, and we do have several where there's very large, 100-year-plus trees along the right-of-way. We hope tomorrow, if the weather cooperates, we're going to have our first installation of FlexiPave, which is a permeable rubber asphalt mix on Erskine Street. So there'll be an 89-foot section of sidewalk that's getting put in there that's the FlexiPave, so I can let you all know about it if it does indeed get installed tomorrow. And that would be the, either that or brick would be what we'd be looking at as a potential sidewalk feature if we wanted to provide, you know, significant permeability for the sidewalk.
Have we considered brick crosswalks?
No, we are pretty much, right now, just intending to do the traditional marked, you know, thermoplastic marked sidewalks. We are adding crosswalks in the design, pretty much at each intersection, as well as the bumpouts and narrowing the crossing distance for the pedestrians. We could look at that as a feature. It's, again, just one of those things where you add cost and you have to kind of question, you know, the square foot, the additional square foot cost if you're getting additional functionality. We could also take a look at raised crosswalks, but in those cases where we've got the stop sign-controlled intersections as well as the crosswalks, that will be something to discuss.
I'm not suggesting we do all the crosswalks. I think they're just, if you, you know, look at the data, there are a couple that are problematic. If we did something unique there, it might, you know, reduce the number of potential accidents, and it would look nice.
Yeah, yeah. I think we should make sure that we know where those high pedestrian areas are. I mean, I think I've got a pretty good hunch of that, but we should make sure that both the city staff and the design team are aware of those same areas and raise these in the meeting Wednesday night.
And I think this is my final question. The 25 bus takes a left on Houston. Residents mentioned that at a number of meetings. Has the contractor looked at that turn radius? Is there anything they can do with it?
Well, we have had numerous meetings with RideOn and communication with them about adjusting the stop locations, so they are pretty much, you know, dictate where they want to see stops and how they want it combined, and they took a look at ridership numbers. I don't know if the issue of the turning radius came up, but we can inquire and see. We did have that conversation about turning radius with the college in relation to some of the curb bumpouts we were going to be doing in the area down towards the southern end of that, and so we did evaluation of turn radius there, but we can take a look at it in others. Sometimes it's a case of restricting parking in a certain area, so there's, you know, unimpeded roadway for the bus to turn, and that may be the solution on Houston. I'm not familiar with the specifics.
Okay. Thank you, dear.
And one thing you didn't mention with the pervious paving was when you're talking about going to the 24-inch depth, I would imagine that you'd be a lot more likely to disturb tree roots going down that far.
Well, yeah, I mean, we.
And if you're trying to protect them by putting that in and you're ripping them up, putting it in, there's no win.
Yeah.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. Well, thanks also from me for the presentation. The overall impression is that this is a very well-managed and very well-coordinated project, and it's great that it sounds like it's on track as well with the understanding that these things can take a long time. I will, I have three points. The first of which is to second what Councilmember Smith said regarding bicycle markings and signage, anything that we can produce, anything that we can do to promote bicycle use along that stretch would be great. I occasionally ride my bike myself along there. I don't find it a challenge because although the observation was that a lot of traffic goes 10 miles an hour above the speed limit, I haven't actually seen, that's not my experience, so who knows about the measurements there. So I second the thought about bicycle markings and signage. My second point takes off from Councilmember Smith's mention, discussion about materials, and so on. It would be really cool to have some form of identity or placemaking, or whatever you want to call it, for Flower Avenue if there's a way to use distinctive materials along the stretch that create a sense of Flower Avenue as a place, something to think about as you get into that level of detail in the design. And then the third point, well, thank you for the exchange that we've had over the last day or so, prompted by email I got from Elizabeth Wallace regarding the street lighting. So I, this is a question just out of curiosity. So Pepco will install new upgraded lighting. You said that will work out some kind of cost sharing, or I don't know what.
We hope, yeah. Otherwise, they have a standard rate for their LED.
So the city has had this thing going, and it's not just the city of Tacoma Park, it's statewide, local governments about buying streetlights from Pepco. Pepco wants exorbitant costs, prices for them, more than they're worth, given their ages typically. And the goal for municipalities, and I don't know if it's counties as well, is to get more energy-efficient lights since we have to pay for the electricity. That's kind of moot here if we're going to be installing new LED lights that are lower electricity consumption. So this is really just a question out of curiosity. Under state law, is it our option currently on the utility pole-mounted lights to buy them ourselves, or is?
No, they're Pepco poles, so we're not allowed to put anything with that.
So that's part of the change in state law? It's not just the pricing, it's that as well?
We can, we can do an underground conduit like we have on Laurel Avenue and Carroll Avenue. We can do an underground lighting structure and own and manage our own lights, which we're planning to do on the other side. We pay them for the power, but we own and manage it, and we don't have the monthly use fees, maintenance fees.
Well, this is my final comment regarding, is regarding the lighting. I've been reading lately about pedestrian-oriented lights along roadways, not the goosnecks that extend out over the roadway, but something that is more welcoming, not just the 12-to-15-foot lights on posts, but the standard lighting along the length of the roadway. Some authorities recommend that, for instance, you might use lighting that is street-oriented only at the intersections, especially the ones, of course, with, well, all of the intersections. There are a limited number along Flower Avenue, but if there are ways to work with Pepco to have more pedestrian-friendly lighting along that stretch, it would be great if you could do that.
Yeah. Pepco just offers their streetlights, which are the high 20-foot plus. I mean, our plan will do pedestrian-level lighting, and also on the website, you can see the style of light that's been recommended. We vetted that with the neighborhood in a previous meeting, so it's the Munich-style light fixture, which is a dark sky-certified light, a very attractive light. And to your point about placemaking and making you feel like you're on Flower Avenue, I absolutely agree and share that, and Councilmember Smith and I have had this conversation before. It's kind of a, I think the city has had success on New Hampshire Avenue to some degree with that, and it has been in the furnishings, in the bus shelters, in the lighting. I mean, we haven't gone that far on New Hampshire Avenue, but I think that will help establish that along the Flower Avenue corridor, where we have a distinctive lighting style that's very pleasant and pedestrian-friendly and really lights up the sidewalk, when we have furnishings and bus stop and intersection areas that have a style associated with them, be it a color or a type. And if we can work out a bus shelter or even bus bench-type arrangement that's very distinctive, I think you'll start to have that, it'll really create that place. If you haven't looked at the website, I would really encourage you to do so because you'll see the significant changes that are being proposed, particularly at intersections, which will, again, give a very, very different feel to the street than you currently have now. Even just a sidewalk on one side is going to give a very different feel to the street.
We also have the Flower Avenue sculpture. I'm not exactly sure what we're calling it exactly.
Yeah, the azalea sculpture at the end at Piney Branch.
At Piney Branch in Florida for that very purpose, to try to enhance that placemaking capacity.
You could think about putting something, you know, commissioning something similar, not identical, but for the Flower and Carroll intersection. I know that there are, I guess it's separately but in coordination upgrades to that intersection planned.
Through State Highway?
Yeah, but, you know, that helps create a sense of the corridor if you have stuff at the gateways to that. And I don't know, you could even, well, I suppose you don't want to put something at the Sligo Creek Parkway in Flower because that sort of encourages the idea that that's not a neighborhood street, which is not something.
Tollgate?
Yeah. I think that there are a lot of residents who love the tollgate. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you, Mr. Grimes and Mr. Kenner, for the nice segue to my questions, which really related to the art, the sculpture that's there at the Piney Branch Flower Avenue intersection. And I was just curious if, you know, as I think about the Carroll Avenue and how the city worked with a local organization to put in the tiles along the sidewalk, that adds a bit of a flair to the neighborhood. And I just wondered if you have been, if you have approached any community groups to seek other artwork along the Flower Avenue that would, again, change the ambiance of the neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah. I know we haven't gone to that degree of specificity. We've talked in general kind of about having public art incorporated into the project, but I think, thinking more along the lines of the piece that's up on Piney Branch and Flower versus anything actually in the sidewalk itself. There's a potential to do that. I think, again, you know, you've got funding issues. That particular project with the city commissioned, had a competition, commissioned pieces and made a selection for which style to use in that installation. It'll be slightly simplified in that the street is entirely ours, including the sidewalk, so we won't have to get State Highway's permission, which it can be a challenge. But we can certainly take that issue back to the community and to the design folks and discuss it.
Yeah, and again, I use that just as an example, you know, I think there are many other opportunities when you're doing bus stops and trash receptacles and all the other things along the avenue.
Right, right.
Even the streetlights themselves.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I did want to just, not to belabor this too much, but just not let it go by, the city is still involved in an effort through Johnson Controls to discuss with Pepco the issue of the city purchase of the streetlights. So it's moving at a glacial minus pace, not making much progress forward. Our contact person at Johnson Controls is no longer with them, so we've been shifted to a new manager in that regard. But we have had some conversations with Jerry Pasternak, and we are awaiting documentation from them that will actually put a price tag on our lights that the city had. So we'll get ourselves a little further down the road in terms of having their first, you know, first actual dollar-figure amount provided to us for the streetlight purchase. Jerry Pasternak and others have gone to great lengths to say this is a negotiation point. You know, you start there, and then the city works it, and, you know, the intention is to come to something more mutually agreeable. But we're hoping that we, and hopefully not too much longer, we'll get something back from Pepco with regard to that. So it has been something that we've been working on for a very, very long time.
Concrete will probably be dry before you get that done.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
I just had one more question. Were you able to add more green features to the west side of the street?
Not so much the west side, with the exception of where we have the most space is down towards the Carroll Avenue where the Washington Venice campus is.
Right.
So we do have a feature, one of our largest feature by probably four or five times the other, so we do have a significant feature that's planned down there. The biggest issue, of course, right-of-way on the west side. We just don't have right-of-way other than in that stretch. So we're, most of the other features are on the east side. But that said, we have created some and will continue to. We have the Wabash bioretention facility that's capturing the water from Flower Avenue down. At that end, we did the Hudson Avenue and set a three bioretention facilities. So we're addressing the west side, not offline, but down a little lower down the grade prior to Sligo Creek Parkway. And our most recent installation is really one that I'm quite excited about. We took away some pavement in the parking area on Roanoke Avenue, about four to five car-length, car-parking spaces, and it's become a permeable pavement area in front of one of our inlets, so all the stormwater from that section of the street washes down, goes through that permeable pavement, is filtered, and then ties into an existing very large storm drain line out to Sligo Creek. So we're now filtering that water before it goes into the creek. So our plan has been to integrate stormwater features off of Flower Avenue for the west side.
What about on Kennebec? Do we have any plans to?
I'm not aware of any projects on Kennebec.
Okay. Because that's going to issue for residents.
We have a major private property issue there behind Flower, Kennebec, and the paved parking area.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman O'Meara, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a few questions and comments. First, Darrell, thank you very much for this presentation. In general, I'd say that to me, this sort of presentation where you're touching on the construction aspects of the the construction aspects of the project, the green aspects of the project, the community interface is a great format, and I mean both what you and the city manager have said and then also the documents. So for me, when I think about New Hampshire Avenue proposals, sometimes those get very specific about, you know, one feature, and I like the idea of having presentations that cover the whole scope of how we're trying to benefit quality of life in the community. So that's one comment. Second, you referenced Johnson Controls, and I just wanted to remind the council and staff that we have the director of the sustainability arm of Johnson Controls who lives on Sycamore Avenue. So if, for example, we're trying to make sure that we've got a, you know, a good staff connection that prioritizes working with us there, that's somebody we can ping to just ask for help, and I think we'd probably get it. Third piece is on placemaking, and I guess, listening to this brave way talk, I was thinking of, one Tacoma came into my mind, and I don't want us to be, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I don't want us to be victims of our own success and have different designs start appearing throughout the city that lose an opportunity for us to have sort of a consistent look and feel. So New Hampshire Avenue, Old Town, and Flower Avenue being three examples, so just making sure we're thinking about consistency. And then my last comment is simply that I support what Councilmember Smith was saying and Councilmember Grimes agreed to on bicycle markings in the roadway as well as signage. So thank you.
And I'll add that I support Councilmember Mayo's comments about trying to keep a consistent look and not get too many one-offs. Any other comments or questions?
I have one more, just, so, Daryl, is there anything? I noticed in the document there is, is there any additional conversation that's going to happen on July 28th as it relates to Flower Avenue? Is there any additional funding or anything else that we are?
Oh, geez, yeah, thank you for that handoff. Our design consultant, Rommel Klepper and Cole, we hired them through an RFP process way back in July 2012. We have a contract with them for $275,000 initially for the design. We have not spent all that money, but we're getting closer and closer to it, and we obviously are not finished with the design. We've had several meetings with them to identify what the adjustments to the budget need to be for them to complete the design development, and that's the number you see in the packet. I'm drawing a blank on it. I don't have it in front of me. Is it 120?
176.
170?
176.
$176,000 to do the, get us to 100% design completion. We've outlined in the memo some of the reasons for the additional cost. Of course, when you start out on a project, you make some assumptions about the length of time it's going to take and the amount of staff hours. This project has evolved and stretched out a little longer than we originally assumed. We also have added features, some of those I've mentioned tonight. We expanded the stormwater features from four to 15, hopefully. We have done a lot more along the lines of traffic calming as a major issue, as well as the lighting design, and so those have used some funds that were previously allocated for the project. The additional money is needed to do the 60 and 90% in the final drawing, construction documents, in order to get us to the end product. The costs associated with the WSSC portion are not included in that. They have a separate cost associated with the design that they will pay directly, as well as the construction costs, so they're not included in that. But what we will be coming back to on July 28th is to get authority to do an additional contract amendment to increase the funding that was authorized originally from the 275 to add the additional $176,000 for the design.
Thanks for that reminder.
Yeah, I think in your packet there, we've included a memo from RKK which lists the various changes that have been made over time to, as well as the assumed staff hours for what those additional dollars will do.
Okay. I think that wraps up that item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One more comment. I apologize, I forgot to make it before. I guess in general, I would love to get, and we've talked about a bit of this already and it's in the packet, but a sense for when the Flower Avenue project is going to be significantly complete. So I think there's essentially roughly a one-year timeline to get major aspects of the construction done, but I'm thinking even beyond construction to, you know, sort of a six-month evaluation of, you know, have we, you know, achieved our goals and, you know, sort of then the follow-up period. I just want to know, sort of, every project like this that we do takes a significant amount of staff time, and I just want to get a sense for as we move from this project into construction and then move beyond it, of what that looks like for the city, something can happen later.
That's, I'm looking at the city manager.
Yeah, I mean, I think, if I'm right-
If I'm understanding, you're talking about once construction has started, or once we've awarded a contract to a contractor for construction, we'll be able to get much more specific information about the schedule?
And probably come back again, maybe do a presentation like this again once we've started construction after six months or so, just to say how things are going.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, your council will be reviewing the bid request or the bid award for the contractor when that comes through, so you'll get all the details related to our bidding process, and that should include information that would be the schedule as well as the cost.
Okay. Thanks very much. That concludes this item. That's our last item of the evening. We're adjourned.